You might want to nod.
Yeah, that.
Yep.
That's it.
Chambers.
That's right.
Please. But this is the product of the United States of America. And to the government, for which Sam and one nation under God, the use of all liberty. That is part of our. That was the one.
Jackson. Here.
Here.
Here. On your matoya.
Here.
Under the E.
President.
On the car.
Here.
On the road.
Here.
All right. Since we have our motion to approve minutes from the committee of hold on February 22, 2022, this is our motion. For all the roles, that's not all the steering wheel. Is there a question? Not left until tomorrow.
On the fairway.
Aye.
On the reader.
Aye.
On the matoya.
Aye.
On the E.
Aye.
On the car.
Aye.
On the road.
Aye.
It's a general.
Next, um, we got proclamation. Didn't make any time for the agenda for yesterday, but we're probably agenda for tonight because it falls off between the two city council meetings. So the proclamation to declare March 16th, 2022 Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Day in Soodoo, Rhode Island. Whereas Intellectual Intellectual. And Developmental Disabilities Awareness Conference reminds the public to bring awareness, educate, and respect people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas effective way to increase awareness by participating in community activities with disabled, learning about disabilities, acknowledging every individual's contribution to our community. And whereas people are encouraged to shift their thinking, trying to fix a disability, and instead focus on supporting individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. And whereas rather than telling individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities what they should do, you should ask them what they would like to do for their community, look for ways to support their efforts. Whereas as we treat everyone with dignity, respect, and kindness, we'll continue to spread awareness, educate, and respect throughout our community, school, and workplaces, and all people on the race. Whereas each one of us now more identity, privilege to make you blue island a better place to live. Now, therefore, I am mayor of Rhode Island, mayor of the city of Rhode Island, prepared by opening March 16th, 2022 Intellectual and Developmental Disability Awareness Day. Encourage all citizens to work together to develop this awareness, understanding some people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Is there anybody to accept this? Next, we have public comment. Anything on the agenda tonight? Anybody call it for public comments? All right, moving on. Under mayor's orders, we should move that. We've had one. I'm gonna skip to street skating because they're here and then. I'll do that one next. The streets getting a lot because we're gonna do a presentation. So Joel. Check this out. You guys get a round of applause for like doing that right.
Um, good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Baldwin from Hitchcock Designer Group. I think you met me all before, but thank you for being here tonight. Looking forward to this presentation. Um, the trip too, so I'm gonna have to turn pretty regularly. I'll try to stand off this side. Um, but we wanted to come in tonight just to give you an update on where we were with the uh. Um, where we're at with the uh, with the old western street skate project. I'm gonna quickly go over some of the construction documents. You should all have a set of documents in front of you. We just had the last week to go over our 90% set. Um, we're aggressively trying to wrap things up here because we're aggressively trying to beat our schedule, which is to go out a bit for March. Um, but a little bit uh, more exciting things to look at are some perspectives, which you're literally hot out of the computer. Um, you wanna see me here except me and my staff. Um, then just wanna talk about next steps for. So again, Joel Baldwin, principal of Hitchcock Designer Group, with the, the, not the project, but T D L with engineering. And Cardo's a catcher or graphic designer. Um, you guys will all see this before, but we're here to talk about phase one, which is the old western historic district. This is the first piece of um, street skate project. Hopefully, uh, next couple of years, phase two will continue, which will be the uptown district and gateway district. Uh, what's included in uh, pretty much all the street skates is lighting. Want to update the existing lighting. Wanna remove and replace the existing concrete sidewalks. Wanna remove and replace the landscape that's there. It's mostly uh, just shade trees and new tree grates. There's some finer landscaping and selected areas, uh, new site furniture. That's just traffic, subcical bike racks, planters. Um, and at Old Western, there's a new gateway sign and new street signs. Um, kind of bringing the, the, the new brand logo that's being developed into the street skate. And then we're looking at installing a message sign in a little plaza to uh, um, for the sister cities. So just real quickly, I'm not going to go through every sheet to summarize these, but this is our cover. 90% construction documents, and here's the project sheets, our general notes. Um, there's the whole set is broken up uh, into different sheets. This is kind of the whole study area. Um, from basically 135th, thousand canal. These bubbles represent uh, kind of basically zooming in. So there's a sheet for each one of these different bubbles or squares. So it's two, three, four, five, um, six additional sheets for each one. So these particular sheets are the existing conditions for saying again, which we have a survey of the project area. That's these sheets represent. Uh, next set of drawings are the removal plans. Get all broken up the same way. But these drawings identify what's being removed, extra relief from distant trees. The sidewalks, the curb if needed, to some of the asphalt pavement to, you know, whatever is out there that's getting replaced. So those removals plans represent. Uh, one of the interesting things on the removals plans there is that there are a lot of unique sort of situations, especially in a lot of the entrances and little alcoves. There's four or five of these sheets kind of calling out exactly how we're treating some of the distant steps, some of the alcoves. What's happening with some of the pavement, some being replaced, some being preserved, or so on. So there's a little unique photo identifying what gets done on each one of these spots. So there's clearly the path track there that's here. Uh, next set of drawings is materials plans. This is where we call out the new materials. So we got the sidewalk, the tree grates. Expansion joints, control joints, just identifying and telling the path track is what goes through. Um, one of the things I did want to highlight on this particular sheet is one, two things. There's this little plaza for the sister cities. There's benches, flag, holes, and a real monument. Um, and then there's uh, as an alternate, uh, price right now, we're gonna improve the parking lot. Um, we still have the beer company, but this is the flag for the parking lot. Um, we have to meet MWRV requirements. So there's stormwater requirements that are gonna be. So the center of the parking lot will be permanent favors surrounded by new asphalt. Parking lot on perimeter or parking on perimeter and parking center surrounded by five lights. We're also looking to do some power volunteer. Um, within the lot for additional power in case there's any special events or festivals or so on that like that here. Uh, next set of drawings are the landscape plans. Again, just identifying where the trees and landscape are going and where they are. Um. Like zooming in on parking lot and this is a street plaza. Uh, just in one of our detail sheets, just again. Construction, you know, typical construction details, pack reeds and uh, steps and fencing. Just there's a whole slew of these basically again identifying and explaining to the path track how to build anything. Uh, the next set of drawings are what we call wayfinding signage. We use it in drawings for the new signage. Um, what we're proposing to do is keep the existing poles at the old, you know, wood blue island sign itself or the blue side and put in new. Um. New, new panels that would sort of, you know, pile up blue and then iron, these would be lit up. Um, and lots of different details here. I guess some presentation graphics showed us a little bit better. Um, but then there would be a smaller message sign adjacent to it. Um, and then this sign that would go in Sister City Plaza. Uh, if you recall, some of the little graphics, we were looking at doing sort of a banner sign across the street, and that's actually gonna go away. Um. The issues with the light poles and just trying to get a light pole to support this banner is just very posper, it is very difficult. So we've kind of eliminated that idea. Um, some typical sections, get into the civil drawings. Um. Just the typical sections of the streets and what's happened with some of the distant pavement on the edges, where we transitioned from sidewalks to curbs. Um, typical MOT notes and legends of, you know, how the street's gonna, how the street's gonna be treated during construction with. Maybe it's traffic and where it's gonna go and make sure that pedestrians and cars, these facilities need to be moved through its face. Uh, lots of writing plans, you know, period detail grades, uh, I guess stock grades all throughout the street and sidewalks and ADA ramps and so on. Lot of detailed grading throughout the project. There's geometry and striking plans. So we're coming back in and strike that street as needed. Uh, erosion and sediment control, making sure that we're treating stormwater throughout construction. Drainage and utility plans. There's not, uh, not too much new drainage in utilities, but there are in the new parking lot, and there is a new structure for the down the street. Uh, standard civil detail and the number of sheets uh, with this. And then we get into the electrical, which is basically the last set of drawings. Um, so again, standard notes, um, standard electrical sheets. Um, we've got two different types of lights. Um, this is the schedules identifying the lights. The fixtures, the arms, you know, all the equipment that goes to the pool with different light poles. There's kind of a close up of the light pole. Uh, one of the things that we've recently changed that's now reflected in this set of drawings. Um, is that the drawings show a metal pole, and we're actually gonna switch to a pack ree pole. Um, which is a significant, significant savings. Um. The metal poles are just, they're the backlog. They're extremely expensive because the cost of steel is so high right now. Um, and so we've, we've made that change and will be reflected on the final set. Um, so here's a little bit more exciting. Uh, there's some perspectives that are hot off the press. You guys do not have a copy of these, but I expect you to. Um, this is kind of, imagine we're driving down Old Western, we're down at the south end, we're driving north here, we have shot basically every block. But here's the new sign. Um, so you can see uh, down at this end, it's just head hole with low. Uh, but new tree grates and trees. Moving forward a little bit. Uh, anyone knows the huge, you tell them that's out there right off the sidewalk that's sort of growing in the sidewalk. That's this tree right here.
We may not just clarify and all. They've been asked later on, probably, um, there's three or four healthy trees we're leaving along.
There are.
There are a lot of dead ones and ash that survives, but uh, there's three or four very healthy ones that are being protected and we're not taking down healthy trees.
Yeah, we've got a lot of new ones coming. Uh, this is coming up to the parking lot and coming up. It's a little bit hard to see, but you'll see other shots of it starting to get to the uh, to the uh. What we call the old western light with string lights across the street. A little bit further down, coming up near the intersection of Broadway. See again, new trees, new tree grates, the site furniture, new lighting, opposing string lights across Old Western, new striking. This is right at the Broadway intersection, which is north. And with a close up of the, of the light pole, light and. Pretty realistic. These are actually overhead wires that are out there. So this is a more pedestrian scale, sort of walking back south down, down the sidewalk. Um, you see some furniture, tree grates. Drive for subcials, new sidewalk, see the light, string light go across.
You are doing the extra large tree grates.
We are. Something recently changed too. We had a five by five tree grade. We've changed that to a five by ten tree grade. Just to give uh, the, the street trees better chance of survival, you know, more soil volume. Little bit different view with further down the street, some of the planters and the lights, accurate pole, banners, light fixture, the string lights. There's the parking lot. Um. So you see permanent favors in the center, new asphalt, new striking, a little bit of a planting bed adjacent to the uh, the wall. Um, planting beds separating the parking lot and the street stage. Some evergreens on the south end screening house. You can see the orange metal poles. There's five of them from here, 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 and two more on the sidewalk here. There's kind of uh, down by the entrance of Old Western, which we can mark and there's a little sister city plaza. Flag holes, seedings, benches that will line it. And then here's back looking the other way, the gateway sign, message sign. Yeah, sidewalk. And very, you know, the sidewalk, tree grates, planting, very, very minimal improvements, but it's, I think we're good. So here's uh, here's where we're after schedule, same schedule I showed when we were here back in July. Um, you know, wrapped us to next nine in August, we did design development in November, and now we're wrapping up construction documents here in March. And planning going out a bit here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, still our plan to start construction in summer and try and wrap things up by winter. Um, this is still sort of the unknown still about considering getting our permits from IDAT. We have submitted IDAT. Uh, they're submitted last month, so um, that's just waiting game and responding to the patents, but uh, it's, it's in our hands. So, but we're gonna work with them as much as possible and hopefully get lucky and start the summer. We're ready.
Any questions? Oliver.
Would um, forestry board get submit put out in two sessions?
Type of trees and would pick up. I'm waiting for IDAT to come back, and I guess we would. I would say we should differentiate between board types. But.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the ones that would be healthy for a street career.
Yeah.
If there's um, any, if they recommend this, right? There's something we're still trying to, we're wrapping up, but.
Yeah, we have to figure it out. We're, we're down. The office will share the act. It's just that a lot of knowledge, so.
Yeah, it's uh, we're not gonna get um, when I'm wanting to hear it away with, well, we're probably gonna get five, six. Uh, particularly coming up. Again, I'm uh, I love the, the concrete pole idea. Um, great uh, usage and easy to make thing. Um, the, the globes are, how tired are we to that? Because I, I, I actually put a poll out for my community. See which light fixture they like better, either the globe or the uh, hexagonal um.
Acorns.
Yeah, and, and uh, uh, resounding. It was, it was not the globe. It was the other one. Nobody voted for the globe at all, so.
The, the issue with the globe and I agree with Oliver, but he, I didn't have a preference back then either, because I ordered the one that concrete ones from Royal Park, and I was present there at 50 year old. Eight more than eight months. No, I was waiting for more than eight months. They're like, probably 10 painted black.
Oh, yeah.
The city of Rhode Island, going back when it was all being planned out, um, while Oliver was involved, we've always had the globe ones here. Throughout history, we always had the globes. We wanted to tie it to. History what we have. We always just had globe. City of Rhode Island never had acorns until they did the old western project in the eighties. We never had acorns here. We never had the, the other ones at Royal Park. We always had globes. And I remember I sent you a couple of pictures.
Yeah, they have, yes.
Always had the globes. So it was tied to a blind mystery.
Put question on the signage. The old one that the front there now that has the old west here, that's, has a sign like in the middle of the boat, are we using those? Is that some bowls?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if Josh tried again to with the, Joel, I mean, um, the IDAT issues that we might run into, we don't use existing stuff. We were submitted 16 times back three, four years ago to do entrance gateways, and every single time, I had said, let's see the existing sign. We're not letting you put it up. So then we're trying to get, if you find a loophole, the poles are already there. If not, we'll have to take it off because we're not gonna slow it down. I know.
Yeah, we're hoping that by, like, like you said, reuse the poles will.
We're tied to, we're tied to a lot of this by IDAT standards. A lot of it's more than you'd think maybe here. Any other questions or concerns? Our biggest concern is getting permits so we can start this year. That's the biggest concern.
Yeah. That's, you know, we're, we're, we're busy working. We've got some work to do, get things wrapped up, like, we'll get everything wrapped up, but yeah, it's all about being.
There's no, Oliver, I know two businesses that joined us. I was gonna break to say if you got any questions while you're here, or you've spent some time up here. Go ahead.
Yeah.
All thankful for being here. Best mayor and older people, uh, Alan from Blue Island Beer Company.
Hey, yo.
Hi. Uh, April 15th, we'll be celebrating our seventh anniversary of business on Old Western Avenue as Blue Island Beer Company. Last two years have been extremely difficult, and uh, it's a miracle that we're, we're still here, but perseverance and sacrifice. Uh, we've made it, and we've watched a number of businesses on Old Western, all the way up to 119th Street, uh, do the same thing. Some are not so fortunate. And uh. Seven years ago, we saw the plans for all this happening, which is one of the reasons that we started our business here in Rhode Island. Uh, also uh, took the name to carry on the working class ethic and make one working class craft beer. That has led us to be ambassadors, bringing people back to town. Uh, so it is a pleasure to see how far this has come along. Everybody's attention to detail and. Of course, starting now on Western, I do feel a little bit guilty of that because, you know, there are great businesses, again, all the way up to 119th Street, but. We uh, bring them in to share in the business of Rhode Island Beer Company. This Saturday, we have Demoski's catering the party. We've had Bakers Pizza cater a number of parties. This last Saturday, we had 200 people at our venue uh, that spent money all up and down Old Western Avenue with food from Natural Law, Trinxit. Uh, Rock Island Public House, and dinner there, and the new Old Western Pizza that opened up. So it is uh. Awesome to watch this time point as things are hopefully back to normal, that some really cool things and updates are happening. Especially with um, potential of our parking area becoming more public. And us having a chance to do some of the things that we experimented with during COVID. And our outdoor events, our craft fairs out in the parking lot, there's a big one that we're going to be doing this April 30th, all up and down the street in conjunction with the Rhode Island Art Alliance. Um, then uh. Looking to carry that forward at least a couple of times throughout the uh, the summer and fall, spring, summer, fall seasons. And um. Just utilizing a number of things throughout the different uh, quarters, if not, um, you know, monthly almost to share with everybody. And when it is then inviting to uh, the people already in town, let alone everyone who comes from Beverly to Tenley Park. And uh, we have people in town from Peoria uh, this last Saturday, who absolutely love the place, people from Michigan over the summer for some of our outdoor craft series that we have. Um. There's nothing but great things on the horizon, especially making improvements like this that are desperately needed and to uh, start on art and um, it's not lost on us. And uh, we're gonna continue to keep on with great things that we've been doing and share with everybody else. Thank you.
There you go.
Well, sure why not?
I hate talking about it. And I want to stress, uh, if it hasn't been stressed many times, three phases, and if anybody knows anything, I've been pushing this um, since I've been elected. This and Rose are two biggest priorities I have on a personal level. I'm glad it's finally starting off on both aspects and Monday. I forgot my ropes tonight, too. Quite early.
If you don't like spirit of life or speed, some. And I'm here to uh, me and Sarah, we had a heated discussion this morning about this, and I'm on board with this. I think that we waited seven years for something to start, and I'm so excited that's starting. We have 10 guys. They have 10 different places to start, so I, I trust you guys. I go by what you guys want to do, and I know this is the best way to start it, because IDAT is hard to deal with. So I know that you're gonna start there, and I'm happy for it. I've waited seven years for the start. I'm really excited, and I love your plans, and I hope it goes forward to the rest of Western. I know with all of you here, it will. So I wanna make sure that, you know, that we're behind you, and this is a great thing for the city. IDAT's hard to deal with, but I know all of you with Brett and this mayor of Aloud will get this done, so. It's not real bad.
Well, thank you.
I support all of you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, there's all the questions, uh, I don't wanna keep you filled on than you did today. Good? Don't be good?
We're good, thank you.
Now, just let us know, we gotta start ringing that bell at IDAT, probably any day now, right? But anyways, I have a customer works to ride that, I'm gonna use that for reference. And outside of the concrete, I was driving to Little Park last weekend, they have concrete holes there. Who won't be the first one to start? All right, moving on, um, I will go back to number two, consulting services agreement, I'm in spirit. Yeah. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
As we discussed yesterday, we have LBP and RFP for, uh, contractual accounting services. Uh, our current, uh, contractual accountant is Roger Rogers, I'll put an RFP for listed services. We've dropped that listed services a little bit, so we think we want, um. I, I don't really know why we've always got my response, we need to put it on in the public, usually we tend to get, you know, this handful of these, uh, it does take some time to put together. You know, we, 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 our P was pretty thorough, been what it asked for, um, so it does take some time to put it together, so it may be not just plugging player for some firms. So, anyway, this is, this is the only offer we received, but as I mentioned last night, based on our experiences with customer, based on the price that they put in here, we believe it's reasonable. We believe that they possess some of the institutional knowledge about Blue Island, uh, specifically the accountant, the, the, the senior accountant that would be assigned to Western, who worked with us, has, uh, uh, created, or now has learned a full breadth, I think, by people in the world. So that would be the senior accountant, part of the work with us, very comfortable with Lauren's knowledge of the city, she's been extremely helpful to us as an auditor, uh, and as, as a consultant, helping craft some of the budget, uh, and appropriations, uh, information that we'll, we'll discuss there. Um, so, and to the best of my knowledge, as I can, I can tell you how we got to this process, uh, in terms of specifics on the, on the response to CPA, uh, to the best of my knowledge.
Well, they're currently our auditor now, correct, so we have to give that out. So we put RFP out for all.
So if this is accepted, we would, uh, dismiss them as auditors basically, uh, sign an agreement with them as our, as our contractual CPA, and move another RFP for audit services. Um, and then, those two audits, the accountant and the accountant, we would then utilize that as our services to kind of officially close the books on twenty one, we haven't officially done that yet. Um, and get sure all our, you know, eyes are on the teaser costs before we go for an audit.
Questions? How, how would your, um, cost compare to the current arrangement?
So that's gonna be, you know, it's, it's an hourly cost, so the, the per hour cost would be comparable, uh, in fact, a little bit less on someone like the senior accountant inside. So you get senior accountant, who's your main financial advisor basically, and the junior accountants who do some of the more routine work. To your question, um, I believe the hourly, the hourly rates are comparable. Our challenge, uh, where we, where this city has seen too much, too much building outside consultants, is when there has not been a healthy administrative, healthy and functioning administrative staff to fill those responsibilities, right? So, a good example is an account recalcitation. Account recalcitations are net complicated, right? You gotta be diligent, you gotta follow the ledger, you have to make sure that you're thorough, but it's not, and we have to train college students how to run sound account departments, right? So, um, they'll do it for a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour, right? We should be able to handle this, so our goal, our challenge for ourselves administratively is that we're handling more in-house and reaching out when we need to, not just to run our, so in terms of getting the cost down, and that's, that's, yes, that's what, that's what our goal is.
Any other questions, concerns from the Alderman? Not, um, we will move to put RFP together, dismiss for budgeting, not budgeting, the audit, and then put RFP out for an audit. Next, I might as well stay up there. All right, these were ways. It's not big, and again, by all means, we don't have to do this today, but I'd like to move in that direction. We can go through, it's only a couple pages, but more importantly, just. What suggestions that are burning that you can tell some of you who have been in Alderman for a while now, that you should include, um, this into a bare bones RFP? Right now, it's basically saying how much per household, they pick up waste, they pick up recycling. There's a dollar amount, a cart for a twenty yard dumpster, some suggestions that I have, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll just jump into some of my ideas that I left them up in here. Just because I better have a big swath of asks, and then we can decide what we want, like off the restaurant menu. I'd like to ask for, we wanna take this page by page. Beginning with page five, timeline, currently our contract ends June third. In the past, if you've been in the resin for more than fifteen years, um, we've switched companies probably three times in fifteen years, and they always pick up the garbage cans on Fourth of July. I don't wanna see that bunch of garbage sitting on alleys on the Fourth of July, because there's always an overlap, there's not an overlap, where it's usually they pick up their cans after the last pickup, the next company has to come into the following week. So I'd like to push this down a few minutes, so they're not doing it in the middle of our high summer season. So I'm suggesting, uh, we approve our contract in May, and then we start like in October, or something to that nature, and we'll have to figure out the legalities of that. That's one of my suggestions, because I remember it was a couple of times, I don't think it was switching over to Lake Shore, is the previous company we had garbage in every single alley's been from cans. We're gonna update on page six, number of units, verify if that's correct based on our larger rules. Under section three, it says landscape waste is collected the same day. April first through November third. I pulled two other villages, uh, RFPs for their municipal waste, they have the same language without dates, I'd like to just cross out the dates. If someone has a bag of leaves, they should pick up the bag of leaves. So I'd like to just remove that timeline altogether, just say collection from wasted, needs to be done, needs to be done at the same time. Those are same garbage, anyway, when it comes to landscape. Um, page seven, about halfway down, it says unlimited recycling collection. Right now, it's every other week, I'd like an a la carte option of weekly collection, uh, just to see how much more that would be. Again, removing April first and November thirtieth, uh, for the waste, for the landscaping waste. Or a possible maintain decorative trash baskets, I'm removing the amount, and just say, I'm copying a mantle of business district. And then you can pick it up three times a week like they've been doing, but any can in this business district is to be picked up according to this contract, instead of giving them like an amount. Because obviously, we increased it substantially in the last three, four years, we plan to increase it some more. Um, I'd like to do an a la carte option of one bulk item per residential unit a week. See what that would cost us to slowly take the burden off our bulk work supply. Now, we don't have to do that, but I'd like to see the option, what would it cost? Let's say they come back at nineteen dollars a household, only a dollar more to pick up that bulk perhaps, and we look at it, but why not ask, never asked before. We go down to page ten, uh, where it says municipal solid waste, recycling, landscape waste, I don't think there's a necessity to break it down each way. We're not eliminating any of these services, we don't just have one dollar. And there's other services, uh, looking into a syllable, according to Jim, our superintendent of public works, um, maybe twenty yard is better on the streets, because I know other contracts I see thirty yard dumpsters. But speaking of the yard dumpsters for our bulk waste, we go on average, we got the numbers for the last three years, seven hundred to eight hundred twenty yard containers we get charged for picking up bulk waste in the last three, because that's our.
So these are, uh, not provided on the streets, this is our, what goes on the, on Public Works.
Um, I would like to, and we're gonna have to debate back and forth between Jim, because Jim's still reviewing some of this stuff, a lot of this, we're on the same page on. Is maybe to include it in the contract, a hundred, to wonder from those pickups, instead of us paying for every single one. And we can try to control what we're picking up, but the ordinance we passed, like we did last month, with no more than one yard per household a week. Maybe we'll see a slowdown, but obviously, we're gonna have to know what the dollar amount is for roll up. And I already eliminated the deputy bed trash boxes, the dollar bed mounters, and through all the business districts, annual escalation, that's contracted, so increasing the year. And then we need to provide a list of free pickups, right now, it's a generic statement in this contract of all the municipal locations, East Downs, Police Department, Wired Mark, Rexon, all those. They don't charge us now, but I want it in the contracts, they don't decide, hey, it's not in, but right now it's like an honor system, which is saying, city's not, uh, they're, they're not charging us for the pickups. I'd like to list it out, our village authority had it listed out, and they're, they're very generous, they, they added every church in town, because they're so small. But I wanna put a list in here so they can't say that was never provided. So those are just my, uh, suggestions, I hope I covered some of your thoughts on some of this stuff. But I'm open, and Aaron's already starting to put together a rough draft of suggestions, because we go full trigger on this, another five years, it's normal change. Now, that being said, when I threw out our dollar rate per household to the other mayors I talked to, they were shocked. I'm hoping for the same ballpark, the only thing I can justify why we're so cheap right now is that we do our own bulk pickup where nobody does that. So that's why I'm gonna put a gal a card option there, hopefully it doesn't, uh, doesn't escalate too much, to bill costs and everything else. The company we have right now is interested in keeping, staying in town, so that the equal opportunity bid, we don't be out there. See what happens, I know it's very aggressive for our business, there's a lot of companies buying for this business, so, um, I'm hoping our rates don't go too high, but. The other thing, right? So we have these suggestions, I mean, it's not a big RFP, but those are mine, that I'm, I'm gonna put in there, just to see what our options.
I'm just curious, uh, whether we, you know, kind of built any kind of a record about their performance, uh, of our current provider, in other words, would we, are they so good that we would wanna kind of, if we could keep them, we would, or are there enough complaints that, you know, we gotta open, or do we have?
So here's the law, and I can go both ways, it's just that the law says we don't have to, you can continue rolling over the company.
That's what they used to do on the, we don't have the law.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we can go either way, Alderman. The law is very clear that this is a service, like a tourney or anything else, you can just keep rolling over, and you can agree on just the end goal besides increase they've been doing. That is an option on the table.
Okay.
It's up to the council, or we can settle that, if you guys are pretty, otherwise we could stop, spend a whole night on public works together. If you guys wanna keep the company, we'll look into doing that, or we keep working on RFP, and go both, both directions, right?
Well, I would say my, I asked the question because my experience has been overall positive. I know I've seen complaints about, like, and I know that some of the aldermen have had some issues that I haven't had in my board, so, but that's just my experience, so.
Uh, as an alderman, I'd agree, I really think that I've forgotten, like, other things, though. And the issues that I, I, they, they've replicated right away.
Alderman, I'd ask you. Yeah, a couple, a couple of things, um, one about getting a garbage can, extra garbage can, things of that nature, but if we could refer some of the things, the complaints, I think, uh, uh, Jim in Public Works has been getting a lot of them, and can probably, you know, give us a little more insight into each board, because each one of them's got a different, you know, very unique situation. One of them definitely is an extra garbage can.
Yep.
And then the recycle rate, uh, 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 waste team, if they had a bag or something that sat on the side, they wouldn't pick it up.
They're supposed to, sometimes.
Right, I'm just saying, and that's what, and that's what was, was one of the issues. And then two, you know, they don't ever really count that we give them free recyclers, you know what I'm saying? We don't take that over to the metal recyclers, we don't take the bottles, cards, or plastic, you know, I'm just saying, they make the money on top of that as well.
I think they build that stuff in, and a lot of these waste companies nowadays, it's always the same place to sort it anyway, that's the truth of it.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, it, it, it's a revenue form as well.
I, I, I need for us a bid process, um, we don't have. All, all men agree.
Okay, and then, of course, as I've mentioned numerous times, the old use, I mean, you said, um, you know, that problem. And, uh, I do think that homes need to have more receptacles, or the receptacle is gone, it needs to be replaced. I know I talked to, uh, Jim quite a bit, we were trying to come up with a, a coordinate, stay in at one point. He wanted to wait for this, um, so we need to build that in, just like you were saying.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, referring to Jim, is that you?
Alderman, that's, that's an easy thing, we can put a line in there saying, if needed, a second.
People don't wanna pay more money to get another can, and then they have the garbage all.
Right, I would agree.
And it also needs to be in Spanish, and it needs to be sent out by not.
So it's already in here, um, if we're maybe to do switch companies, information on that, with SBA, it's pretty expensive to service, or we can add SBA language, the language. We can add it in there, it's secondary, and it's dated, it's some charge. I believe, um, the other issue of being charged as a new house weeds, we have, based on whatever these prices come to have, you should just look at the ordinance at that time.
Yeah, right, yes, definitely.
But I, I agree that we, we need generously be, be more containers out there, because you walk down the alley, it's supposed to be garbage day. It's not the residents' fault, and so far, it's, it's just, they're overflowing, yeah.
Any other? All right, so I'm leaning on RFP, um, just see what's out there, but I do, I'm hearing more, so, so I, if you're thinking on this, if you have ideas, if you want, like, uh, to all, or just suggest that we're gonna add that language in, it doesn't hurt to add it in, or if we're gonna do this process, but we're making it happen. There's any ideas, what I'd like to say, we're gonna go, we're moving forward in RFP, unless, uh, substantially, I get some negative feedback that it's gonna be twice as much or something like that, then I'll come back to you guys, say, I'll take what you're doing. But everything I'm hearing right now, we are five dollars a house cheaper than what it physically from there. Now you're five dollars.
The most, the most. The most bad accident is right there.
Still a little charge, like you said, the garbage, we got rats, squirrels, the garbage can, we got, we got road issues. You know, we got extra small dogs, that's actually called rats, and they even hose right through them, and try to get to garbage can, and it's all lost.
I agree.
And you're gonna pay for it.
Well, I would take, I would take your suggestion, Alderman, um, we're gonna put in there that we need a secondary can. I believe if we can, if we could decide to stay with the same company, we can make a demand, and then they get that in. And we go RFP anyway. There's always that, we should, we had the cars in the situation, yeah.
Well, we were supposed to look at.
We're really RFP, I think we should really RFP, um, and if, if the bulk pickup is, I mean, if we can take that off, off of Jim's hands, we'll be assured, and I think that's a great idea.
That's right, I think it's, it's one bulk item a week, which is actually what most towns do, and they also do cleanup days, I wasn't gonna start going crazy here. But one bulk item, it's not too terrible, I would push for that, with that price payment, because it would solve, not eliminate people at Public Works, it would solve half the crew riding around all day picking up garbage, it would only do special payments at that time.
Well, I don't have a problem, I think that Lake Shore does a great job, um, just as all the, I don't have a problem with that, it's just hard for us to actually set up extra cans. Um, because I do remember when we did put the second bid, um, it was considerably low, and that's why we wanted the company, and they were, if they were working with us, and of course, people get complacent.
I know.
I think that if we talk with them, because every time I deal with that, my, like you said, they, we find problems.
I, I tell you this, what I'm doing, so I put a lot of thought, because we dug it around for a while, but obviously, I get all these mutations, we have to send over. I will continue putting more thought into this, because again, it's, it's administration thing, we can keep the same company, I just wanna sleep at night, be okay with that. I, I, my gut is RFP, but it's gonna cost the city another five hundred thousand here, that's, that's not, no more, I wanna go that route.
Because it, it might also, you know, make it compatible, I mean, you know, competition for an aggregate, you know, to, to give us, yeah, free dollars.
You know what I'm saying, is, is there always a counter to both sides? Right, all right, I'm gonna put more thought in this, I'll refer with the attorney, with the administration, we're gonna pull some other opinions from other towns, what they've gone through. Uh, the attorney just told me today about how these are coming in in other towns, and keep on calling the mayors up to see what they got to say.
And then I'm going with you, good.
Well, we were supposed to look in-house at how much it was, the ordinance regarding the, um, house, the lecture.
Yeah, I think the cart before the horse, if we're gonna add that in, regardless, we'll stay with the company, ask them how much would be for one bulk item, or we go out for an RFP. Once we have the information, we can attack our own ordinance at that point, otherwise, I think we're a ten hour, and it's about the information. That's what we decided to do anyway, when we talked about this last time, because we don't really have all these, like, no dollar house. Any other suggestions, if not, I'll confer some more with some other mayors, get, go. Both my guts are split right now, I was leaning towards RFP, um, until your comments, now they couldn't, yeah, I got. Both my guts aren't split right now. I was leaning towards RFP, um, until your comments, now they couldn't, yeah, I got a little smaller dollars. All right, moving on. We have nineteen seventy-five ordinance discussion. This is the attorney that came up through. All over our union contracts, she was, she was able to say if I were this.
All right, we pulled this seventy-five ordinance that's referenced with some of our C D As, and. It allows all city employees, union or non-union, to receive disability pay. Um, and it's similar to the ordinance that we saw with our retire reinsurance, where it just provides very large blanket benefits. And I don't know whether or not it's being implemented correctly, um, or not, regardless. Uh, since nineteen seventy-five, there's been statutory, uh, changes, especially for policemen, now they have PETA benefits in terms of occupancy disabilities, C E B U. If they have a disability injury, um, so this really just needs to be updated to. You know, come into times. Brought up to date in twenty twenty-two.
You said the option could be just eliminating state statutes, you already called it.
We could, right.
I'm all in favor of cleaning up our books, we don't get to do it, do it, that's my. You guys have a chance to redo it, but everything's probably in the safe lot, huh?
Uh, everything for the police and fire is, and then we have a handbook that would discuss, uh, any non-union fully benefits for, um.
We would just update, update the handbook to include state statutes.
Yeah, and I think it may have, actually, our.
What's the? We put this on the agenda to just eliminate, and follow that state statute.
Yeah. I don't think we're using it anyway.
So we need new ordinance to do away with ordinance.
I don't know that anyone needs it, well, that's it, I heard, but it's really now, uh, very out of date when statutes.
We'll put something together, and I'll be back.
I'm sorry, did you say that it, it, that union and non-union, we have the same?
So in the ordinance, the union and non-union have the same, but now with, uh, statutory laws. Policemen and firemen have different, uh, statutory requirements for disabilities that aren't referenced at all in nineteen seventy-five ordinance. And the statute would, uh. The statute would rule, uh, that we're looking at the nineteen seventy-five ordinance versus the statute. We're gonna have to follow PETA or P C, P C E B U. Uh, in terms of the non-union or the public works, public work C D A should talk about, uh, giving disabilities, non-keeping disabilities and what their benefits are. So that would control, um, over this ordinance, and then our non-union employees, the handbook. Will describe what they get in terms of having, you know, disability. The nineteen seventy-five ordinance is very outdated.
All right, so it'll be on the agenda, this is some research, if you want, once that, so we.
Yeah, and if you have questions, send me an email. I, I have a large summary of what's included in the nineteen seventy-five and, you know, how it is, uh. Very different than what's in the C D A, non-union book, yeah.
All right, next we have, uh, five and six is power, first one's Blue Station, uh, Mark, one twenty-one, twenty-six, and seven, it's five minutes of tax. And I believe power one, just do a three on both of these. Pass unanimously, unanimously, correct, our planning is on. Yeah.
So that is correct, yes, they both, uh, have us unanimously, we only have four of the four people, so both of them are fours zeros. Uh, the first one was the food store that's on Vincent. Uh, one, two, one, two, six Vincent, Blue Station Mark. Since they're located on R one zone, it's a special use, and they had to apply for a special use for the continuation of the. The food store that's there. And then the second, uh, special use was for twenty-four fifty-one, Vermont Street. This is for the Blue Island Fire Museum and Educational Center. Again, a special use for a cultural institution, for a new, uh, two-story building. Being built, uh, directly across the street from us. So again, that application was also approved four zero.
So are any questions regarding either one of these for our? That'll be on the agenda for that. Thank you, Arv. Thanks for moving on, number seven, growth. Travis is, uh, out of town today, otherwise he would plan to be here too, and he'll be here at a future meeting. But he put together, um, a while back, the growth conditions, and he updated it for last year's improvements. And we told him to pick eight or ten streets that are the worst in the city based on funding. And, uh, to spread them around, which are pretty spread around. Now, this is a lofty goal, but depending where, what we're looking at revenue sources, M F T. All of this can be done now, I just don't want to empty some accounts out without some state funding. So we're gonna, he's already had the engineers are putting specs together and bid documents together, we really don't know where they're gonna land, just like Robinson would say, they don't know where they'll land till the bid's coming. But these are estimates on what they would cost, this will be around one for the summer. However, um, this is only figuring in revenues, revenues that we have now. However, state monies come in, we have to amend this, um, to add more streets to this. Now, that being said, um, there is streets out here that are still planned from last year's approval, that are not in this map, this is for the summer. So one hundred and nineteen Alleyway, um, just another street, oh, there's another street here, we got it, anywhere, as they're still under Robinson. That's supposed to be done this summer. There is some streets that were done last summer that, uh. Uh, aren't on this map, this is just for the summer. But if you look at the newly created green streets, everything's memory, we did Collins, we did one hundred and nineteenth Place. We did some small streets out from Mount Street last summer. So this kind of spreads it around. Every ward has something going on this summer. Uh, with funding, I have this E V G, there's New Street right there, I know it wasn't listed in the ordinance last night, but there's New Street, right? Hopefully that funding comes through, York Street is just as bad. Um, Mount Street between one hundred and twenty-seventh and Walnut, terrible. I mean, none of these are great. All right, none of these are even driving, actually, if I want to be truthful, so. Um, is there any questions or anything like that? Because he's off and rolling on this, because he's got a lot of time to get. Specs out there. Well, all I can tell you is that I was told to, every time we put a road thing together, that to spread them around and do the worst ones first. That's my direction to Travis, which I think he did pretty good here. Questions?
Well, I, just to, to the, uh, accuracy of the, the road condition map of, uh. That was put before us, um, because it. I, I'll just take for an example, Ellen, I haven't driven all those streets, obviously. Um, but, uh, Ellen Street is slated, uh, from one hundred and, uh, twenty-seven to, to Walnut. Uh, on the map, it shows that there is, is a, uh, one block that is, uh. You know, I guess colored, colored yellow.
There, it might be a red site, yeah, that is not fair.
It's not fair.
It's not fair.
I, I just throw it.
Yeah, and I'll tell you on Popper, I noticed one too.
Definitely red.
There's a block on Popper not here that the red went a little too far, where it's not as bad, and so, uh, east of, uh, Highland, I believe. But that, that is, there is always imperfections on everything, but yeah, there's one block here or there that might be an issue. But Ellen Street is all done, it's just. Our teacher was red. It's all red, so is Greenwood, it's all red, thirty percent on map is red. It's not falling punches, there's no streets that are good, except the ones we just did the last couple of years. And maybe the first ward, Bowland and Johnson, I'm not gonna, you know, probably just under that trouble.
It's more, more red than what it's right.
No, it's, it's, I think, I don't think it's near the bottom here, but you guys don't figure it out, actually. All right. I'm here, the dark red is very poor. This is from a C map study that was done, I believe, in twenty nineteen, and there was no construction done in twenty twenty. So he was using the same, maybe those C maps missed, but they did that, they four sampled the entire city with a grant. So they based off that, and that's what Travis based it on. Um, so very poor is dark red, poor is light red, fair is yellow, and I'm looking at fair streets right now, I would say fair probably needs to be done in the next couple of years. Because they're pretty cramped up, if you look on some of these streets, like Florence and Vernon, they were done ten years ago, they're ready. In a perfect world, if we had money, we should be doing them right now. And then you go good is green, and dark green is very good, those ones we probably just did, so like. Collins would be dark green, now this is dark red, so we just did it, because this is the one for the previous summer. But I think we can make those changes, you could probably change them. But Ellen Street is definitely, probably toward reading. Except, of course, the first. There's one, one street in the first ward that Alderman Johnson.
There's a couple of, but we.
Hundred, all street, that's a ward.
Yes.
So he is, uh, gonna come at a future meeting, but they are off and running because now out of time, and we, I, I hate how this city has always in the past. Dawn Street projects in December. I hate it, bothered me, like, I'm right now, I had to come back and finish landscaping, it's superb work, one hundred and nineteenth street, because the season ran out. Um, they're not completely done, although, again, you know, they were talking about that. Um, I hate that, so that's why he's off and running, and hopefully we can handle this, not, not to mention, this is very aggressive, if we get this all done this summer, that's the most in anybody's recollection. Ever been done.
So wait, look, look, so you want to get all these streets done by next summer, is that what you said?
The green streets. It's my goal, the ones in here.
The red, ones in red?
Ones in wood.
This is all red. Who's like, fuck it.
If we run out of. I didn't get a lot. But I didn't have a credit, you know, I don't have that. You sure?
What's a?
You know, I think Mr. Walker should have gave me one, you know, but yeah. Obviously, we all, I would go back to the tip issues, so many couple neighborhoods have tips.
We need to.
Yeah, like.
It's a lofty goal, but I'm gonna shoot for it.
Oh, that's great.
And, uh, Josh is gonna talk to hundred and fifty appropriations, I'm sure, because the money has to be there.
That's good, we, we need to be.
I might be a little high in the sky, but not too much. We have some reserves here that haven't been spent because of COVID, and we have our applause that can manage a long time. Cost, so this is an aggressive year, and let's pray for the following year, we get some state funds or any other grants that Travis is applying for, he's applying for S T P. He's applying for, uh, low interest I E P A loans, whole thing is supplied, or not, that would be effective, so.
One thing that I have to answer is when you said the worst streets first, and how often are they used?
The other thing that.
Because last time when we did New Street, yes, it was horrible, but how often do people?
I, I brought that up, so if, you know, I don't want to bring too much attention to each street, but he was deciding between a couple of streets. I mean, mine's Alderman Johnson, but you notice Wall Street and, uh, the one by Wall and California is light red, like other streets in that neighborhood. But it's a thoroughfare that connects one hundred and twenty-seventh to Vermont, if people want to miss a train. And that is one of the worst streets in the neighborhood, so I told him, pick that one, because that one is traveled probably by fifty times more people than the other little streets in that neighborhood.
So where are you looking?
Uh, Wall and California, one hundred and twenty-seventh to, um, Vermont. Is on this summer's schedule because that is a thorough cut. We will cut down one hundred and twenty-seventh. Yeah. That cuts down one hundred and twenty-second Vermont, because it's a main thoroughfare, and that's probably traversed probably ten times, twenty times more than, plus another street right next to it, Mozart. But they're both the same condition, they're both terrible. Fairview, that is traversed, uh, there's, there's apartments all on one side, so that is. One of the reasons, I said, pick where you, when you draw these streets, look at the amount of cars going down.
Yes.
So there was a lot of fun, I spent a whole day with the engineer driving around, by the way, I, I. You guys already know that, I, I can't sit in my office, so.
I, I know Highland where, um, with the tanks, it's. And you turn that corner right there, it's all.
That's it, that's a little corny, see on the bottom, yeah, yeah. Um, there's a little two-block section of Highland Avenue between one hundred and twenty-third and Orchard, for some reason, it's terrible compared to the rest of it. Anybody's been there recently? Use your axle. It was only two blocks, but it's one of the worst two blocks in the state.
Yeah, well, I know, we can, we can.
Yeah. There is one street that's not on here, there's a reason why it's not on here, because we applied for I E P A loan to that home neighborhood. Um, it's not solid that we have it yet, but that would redo the streets north of one hundred and twenty-third by the water. So I didn't want to put it on here, because I don't have the funds to back it up yet. That one street, by both engineers' estimates, a million dollars, just that one block. Because the model water main is, is leaking underneath there, it has to be replaced. It's not to the point where it's, it's, we're losing a lot of water, but if you're gonna redo a street, you gotta do that first. And I, we, and, and raise it on the council, that's the one, uh, Tom Averill always mentioned, it's worse street in town, this is why. Because we need to spend this additional five hundred thousand of this water. So we applied for I E P A loan, um, we haven't got confirmation, we're gonna get it, but if we get it, it'd be a low interest, no interest loan, and that could redo that whole section in town. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of moving parts, but let's cross our fingers we can do everything on the list this summer. And along with the streetscape, then we're gonna be ready to see some. All right, moving on, finally on the second page. Appropriations, I know this is a really short topic. So who wants to go first?
I'm gonna turn this over all, all here in a minute, uh, just to set the table. Um, so, twist, you know, we met, you got the first copy, the first draft of our, uh, of our budget. Document, we talked last night about, you know, how much budget appropriation. Uh, but this is the updated version of it, we've combed through it a lot more thoroughly, uh, my, I, Mayor Blotto, myself, Alderman Roll. Mark Tosca have been, you know, took a hot potato with this thing in terms of combing through department by department, line by line, we've met with department heads multiple times at this point. Uh, to get feedback, um, get some, you know, less made ideas, et cetera. So what's in front of you is what essentially is gonna be under the hood, the guts of the appropriation. Uh, as we talked about, the appropriation document, you know, prove itself, will include things like anticipated. Excuse me, anticipated, uh, uh, grants, anticipated, uh, state capital funding, things that never may not come to fruition, so. See some, the numbers of the appropriation back in itself that look larger than some departments, some funds, the way we're looking at. But this is the, the meat and potatoes detail of what we're, uh, what we're. But we're working with what we think is responsible spending, uh, this is what we're doing. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Alderman Roll, who I also just want to thank quite freshly for the effort and time he's put in. Uh, it's gotten, really gone above and beyond, uh, and he's kind of honorary staff member at this point, um. One of the things I definitely appreciate about all members of the council, I think, for a lot of people with this, that are operating, uh. Different life experiences, career experiences in this job, or if you're fortunate, Alderman Roll, is in a position where he can utilize his career experience to help us better understand the budget. It's, uh, and I think this, uh, what he's become to develop here is gonna be a very useful tool, not only this year, but many years moving forward. Um, and then just one last note, so. We're going to be posting a notice in the, uh, uh, in the Chicago Tribune, uh, to meet the ten-day mark, I will submit the convertible, I think, at any time. Um, and then we'll post publicly, both physically in the clerk's office and, uh, on the web as well. Things, something, there are minor changes, it's subject to change until it is a file approved by the council, uh, on that. Close the first twenty-second day. So it can change, some, uh, we would, we're gonna try to keep changes small, we think we've, we've done the journey, it's work, but. You know, Alderman Johnson, if I need to get some more money for ink and paper, more quick, I can do that, so.
I'm gonna ask, because Barry can think of that.
There you go. Um, so it is, there are some, some is change, if you see something, also, as you're going through just the paper copies that you have. Um, you might still run into occasional highlighted pieces or something like that, it's just things we're tracking as we're going through it, like I said, multiple hands have been passing this around, it's been, it's been both your changes. Um, so with that, I think I would hand it over to Alderman Roll to present what he's been working on in terms of data, the data management.
I, I just didn't have a lot of questions. So let's start, but I, I did ask, have you changed how the layout of the, um, appropriation? And it's, uh. It looks like it is, you put on grants and, etc., it was in the, is it general?
So.
That is inhabited under the.
So, yeah, we did do some cleanup structural changes, so we're, we were talking about a couple of different things last night, we can dig further, deeper, what I was talking about in terms of our approach of appropriation of our budget. We stuck with a approach that is, you know, we had inherited. We did do some work to clean this up, though, uh, for example, previous year's budgets over the past few years, um. The previous appropriations over the past few years, did specific line items on specific salaries, but that's not really in the way, because this value is usually due to appropriation. What we do here is clean it up and say, here is what we are appropriating for full-time and part-time salaries per department. Right, and as we discussed, within the final product, we're, we're, we're going to, we're working on a, a. Salary schedule, um, so, you know, council and public and everybody else is aware, uh, obviously it's public information anyway, but everyone else is also aware, how. At least, uh, with the staff made up now, how we intend to structure, uh, uh, how we intend to structure that, so. We did try to clean up and modernize it a little bit, um, but we are still, sort of like I said, carrying over from last year, some, some of the practices, and how it.
This is the same company that's been doing this?
Well, this was us still.
I was talking about previous years.
Oh, I mean.
Then we didn't come up.
Different, different administrative staff, different accountants, you can point to a given year.
Same audit, right?
Um, that I don't know, I should have to check, but you, you, you may be right. Um, in terms of building up the budget. You know, it's, it is done differently by, you know, has been done differently. For example, previously, finance committee had it all in that, yeah, so now we're in a different structure, so, um. So, some things changed, some things stayed the same. I imagine as we progress with this council, we will better develop our processes. Of how I do it based on what the council wants to see, what they don't feel like they've been bottomed down with. Um, so, yeah, let's. Hello?
Yeah, so what we did is we, we built a data model, uh, out of the appropriation, um, which lets us build interactive reports on top of it. And, uh, just get a good sort of high level characterization of how it breaks down. Uh, at the top left is our expected, uh, revenue for the coming fiscal year, thirty seven point one million. And just to the right of that is our last three years of appropriations and actual spend. So right now, we've appropriated thirty two point five million of the expected thirty seven point one million dollars in revenue. Uh, to the right of that, at the top, is a departmental breakdown of the appropriation. Uh, so this just lets you see where you're roughly by proportion, uh, where the currently proposed appropriation is going. Uh, it is dynamic, so if I select police as a department, uh, the rest are the rhetoric updates. Uh, so now in the, in the top left, it's not the overall appropriation, we're actually seeing, um, this year's total appropriation for police, but also. Uh, the prior two years appropriation and actual spending. Um, and, you know, this is just meant to help facilitate discussion and questions tonight, but if any of you'd like, uh, to have a meeting with me to look at any of this in greater detail, please. Uh, at the bottom is the breakdown by account. So these are the accounts in the ledger, but this lets us see the type of spending across all departments. So, uh, right now, we see that full time salaries, uh, we're expecting nine million, which is something we pointed out in meetings ago. Um, and if I select that. Then we can see the salary breakdown, uh, across departments. So now again, in the top left, we can see, uh, the growth in, in salary spending. Uh, last year at eight point three million is the appropriation we spent eight, uh, we're expecting to spend nine. Any questions about this, or would anybody like to see a particular slice of this data before I get to, to some of the, the detail stuff? All right. So this next page, I think, is probably, uh, the most useful, even though it's far less pretty. Um, this is a sort of, you know, detailed or numeric breakdown of the appropriation. The first column, uh, is, is the actual appropriation value for the year. Uh, we have departments on the left. Second column is the prior year's appropriation. And next to that are the actual spend. And then there in the middle are the colored bars, this is the year over year change in appropriation. So the red bars represent departments where we have increased, uh, the expected spend, spends, the bigger the bar, uh, the greater the increase. Uh, blue bars show where we actually decreased the appropriation. Uh, we also have a year over year change percentage, uh, as well as what this year's appropriation, uh, how it compares to last year's spending. Um, so with police at the top, uh, we're, we're looking to up the appropriation year over year by six hundred and fifty thousand if they expand this. Now we can see which accounts within the department, uh, that money's being allocated to. Uh, the very top there is salaries full time. Uh, we know this, so we're looking to, uh, pay for more staff, the police department, and that accounts for the vast majority of the increase there in that department. Uh, next is risk management. I'll just go through, I think, some of the top departments where we, uh, increased spending. So for risk management, um, the largest increase there is insurance fees. Um, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that is for the sake of looking for general liability insurance, uh, this year. Uh, and then the next largest is our, our medical insurance fees, uh, expected to go up. Just stop me if anybody has questions or, uh, for me or for, for Tom. Uh, business districts, the next one, um, we've allocated three hundred thousand dollars to engineering, uh, in this department. There was no allocation last year, uh, so that shows up as, as a large increase from zero to three hundred thousand. Uh, as well as an additional hundred thousand to the side grant improvement, and then another hundred thousand allocated to the streetscape. And again, this is just an allocation of our expected revenue for this year, right? So if we have accounts, um, like, you know, MFT, where there's money sitting, it will not reflect the intent to spend, uh, existing. Uh, balances, so that's, that's where having a true budget, what I think, tells the larger tale of, of our financial intent.
And Alderman, I, just so we're piggybacking on the streetscaping, we know we collect roughly, would you figure, six or seven hundred thousand?
Six seventy five.
Six seventy five is what we historically collect, but we obviously know there's seven years of buildup in, in, in the reserve, that'll be reflected in the budget.
All right, public works is next. Again, um. The, the biggest source of increase in public works is for salaries, uh, once again, something we've discussed, the need to. Defop staff there, uh, and then the next largest is an anticipation of needing more for garbage and recycling, which we just talked about. So I won't keep going through these. Are there any that anyone else would like to see or that has questions on, uh, by department?
If I could ask just a kind of overall question about where we're going here tonight or whenever. Um. Uh. We've got a meeting scheduled for the twenty second, there'll be kind of a final look and vote, right?
That's the intention.
Yeah. And then between now and then, what's our review process going to do? Get any changes that I wanna, I wanna make?
It's in the council's hands, so I'll defer to the Alderman, and I know what my purposes would be, but I would.
Yeah, I think the hope would have been to have some of those ready today. Um, obviously, I think we're just constrained by, uh, when you have those questions and when we can get an answer, then what changes do you need to make?
We'll make ourselves available for a meeting if we wanna, if we wanna come in and sit down and buckle down to have a second, if we wanna keep that to the low open meetings level. But as I said, the, the staff's available, I don't know if we call it roll, but certainly the staff's available to hammer into any specific department, line item, the whole thing, whatever we wanna do. So we're here to take feedback.
So, uh, the technology.
Did I get that emailed, the document emailed to me?
So, this program, um. I could mail you the file, but it, it's, you know, it's, it's still, the program itself might be a little hard to use. I could send you screenshots of this, but it wouldn't be interactive like this. Uh, but if you want, we can set up a call, a screen share, you know, look through it, uh, look at whatever you want. Um, this is something I'd love to see the city have, though. Uh, you know, we, this is something we could set up, we could put it, embed this in the city website, if we wanted, make some parts of this public facing, but also provide it to city, city staff. And track additional things, right, like year-to-date spending against our budget or appropriation.
Um, we used to do that. At every finance committee meeting, I'm not sure, I wasn't on the finance committee over the past couple of years, but. We made it a point to look at the revenue expenditure and, like, I think it was every other meeting to be sure that we were on track. I believe that fell by the wayside, that's how we were able to stay close to what we had appropriated for. But like, like I said, I, I think that it just kind of fell by the wayside.
And, and the way this would work, uh, like with my clients, is this would be set up to refresh from our financial system nightly. So it wouldn't, you know, not every time you leave, you wouldn't have to manually compile this to present it. We could have these things sort of built once and always refreshed and ready to look at.
Well, it's.
So, uh, you know, this is our first year, but I, I think it'd be great if this is something we could come back together on to look at in, uh, for the city. Uh, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I, I already kind of went over this, would you?
Uh, yep.
But, uh, the technology, uh, upgrade that we were considering for the building department. Uh, was, was that, and which one was that?
So, yeah, rebuilding, there's a computer hardware and software. That, that's gone up two thousand dollars year over year. Or sorry, uh, no. I haven't heard time read. Uh, it's four thousand dollars this year, yeah, up two thousand from last year.
Okay, so they, they, the upgrades will, are included in the appropriation.
In terms of what the requests we built in the department were in regards to like tablets, mobile computers, stuff like that, yes, yes, that is. And their requests from a technology standpoint, not crazy expensive, so we think we can cover it, go ahead. Cause we're looking at three, four inspectors, having some, some book that they can share, but we get it covered.
Um, and piggybacking on that, also, what about for, um, public works? So that they can read the, um. Water mains?
So we did, we actually bought new readers this year. So we do have new readers. Um, there is a specific line item for, and I would put this along the lines of, uh, similar to. Um, so, something that my building insurance question, we're, we're trying to, I mean, probably just make enough room on the boat, even though we don't know how big, how, how much room we need. So, um, it, to try to, there, there is a desire to more broadly upgrade our water.
Now, right now, they manually have to go out and do it, so in order to.
So we're pricing that, it's very expensive.
What's that?
A, a, a first step is a three hundred thousand dollar line item is a, is a water apartment. Um, in the hopes that will be enough to start the process. It, it, we, we would be back there talking about FY twenty three, uh, by the time we, we maybe make that next step. But strong desire across the board, I think, to upgrade that system, so, um. I think we need to try to chase some outside money, which we're trying to do right now, that might jumpstart it. So probably in the appropriation document itself, we'll make more room, because that's appropriate money, not the budgeted money. Within the budget, we're constrained by, you know, what we have, right? So, um, so there's money to start with the projects, we added a little investment this year into it. Um, and more broadly, the public works, we met with every department head, we did, uh, our level best to try to give every department have what they need, in terms of staffing, in terms of equipment. Um. And we can't be everywhere, obviously, the bank does, we have prioritized, but in the case of public works, you know, we are trying to increase the staff. For new, for new vehicles, and there is a specific water department, a three hundred thou, three, three, three hundred thousand dollar line item, which is meant for beginning the process of a meter change out, which is possible.
Any other questions? Is there anything specific that anyone would like to see?
Uh, if I might just ask you, yes, again, kind of more general question, but it's trying to get down to specifics, I guess, here. Um, you know, looking at this, kind of the higher thousand foot level. Uh, basically, the, you know, the total city budget compared to last year. Last year's spend compared to this year's appropriation is, you know, roughly get twenty percent increase across the board, it goes up and down, all kinds of places. But if you look at the, um, you know, general fund expense. We're going from sixteen point three million we spent in twenty months for appropriating nineteen point five million, that's a three point one million dollar increase. And then the total fund expense kind of follows along. Uh, we're going from a twenty seven point nine million dollar spend last year to a thirty three point nine million dollar spend this year, that's a six million dollar increase in our spending plan. And I mean, it just naturally, that has got to concern anybody in this room, because it's a big jump.
Well, and if I could just stop you, though, historically, there, that gap remains between what we appropriate and spend. Um, I mean, that, if, if the revenue matches what we expect in terms of what's appropriate, it's not. I mean, it's just money then that we basically have, like what we have in the MFTs and TIF funds.
Yeah, the appropriation averages fifteen, twenty percent above the projected revenues. Because it's not a budget, a budget, you wanna be closer, make sure it's what you actually have.
So it, it is a pattern, I guess, is all I want to point out, and probably at, at least a semi-intentional one.
No, I, I understand, it, it, but it's within the details, and I guess it's to my point that. Um, you know, I looked at the document you gave us a couple of weeks ago, and I knew that it was, you know, very rough and, you know, and it's just like. I was, you know, and I made a lot of notes on that, and I wanna go back and make more notes on this. Um, and there's a lot of notes and, um, a lot of questions that I'll have. And, um, I don't know, you know, all relate definitely well, so I, and we obviously, we couldn't go to tonight, we just, we're gonna, first time, so. I do kind of wonder if we might do a scheduled meeting here somewhere, or.
Say an additional.
Yeah, add on to, uh, next, oh, actually, we needed additionally, because next week would be.
We've got a time.
Yeah, because we're running out of time.
Got six days, right?
Right, and, and so we're gonna really need to kind of finish this one, set the next, the next episode. Um, and I, I think we need to have a discussion more about these things between now and then. Um, so I guess I'm suggesting a meeting next week sometime. Cause I mean, I just can't, there's no point. I, I. This is the second time we've had a copy of it, and I think we. Come at six o'clock before we approve it, it's a whole hour, there, we can go back and forth. Or I think there, this did put so much work and time, it's more than I've ever seen, actually, as an Alderman, even when I wasn't in the office, there's not much I need to put into this. I have some questions myself that I will send to Alderman Roll on the top open, but I don't think necessary, that kind of meeting. A lot, there's nothing in here that, again, is appropriate. And we don't know outside of exact revenues, we don't know grants, obviously, stuff like that. We don't roughly, we spend, we plan to spend, we have, it's built involved for the three union negotiations, they don't, that kid, we don't, I don't know a lot, that's why they've already built this push. But I don't think it needs to call for another separate meeting, but we have this, this, uh, public hearing, it's a whole hour before we meet the city council. I believe any, any council, you approve at city council, even at city council, changes can be made, that's, and they actually write over the two, we can handle that. And that, so that we, when we look at it on the twenty second, um, I guess I'm unclear, do we have to, um. Approve a final, final act on the twenty second? Or is it possible to have revisions beyond the twenty second?
Well, it's gonna be an agenda to prove on the twenty second. If we don't come to a consensus or a majority vote, um, then we'd have to have another meeting, that'll get on the tasks, uh, for that insurance deal, which we have to abandon market. But I would hope we pass it on the twenty second.
All right, okay, that's, that's clear enough for me, thank you.
I would just say, from a staff standpoint, whether it's a Cavendish meeting, or if you just wanna sit around conference table, Mark and I will make ourselves available. With a little bit of, uh, scheduling, I can, uh, uh, try to make, uh, accounts available as well for more deeper dives and historical. But between Mark and myself, come, Alderman Roll, I think we can answer most of the questions. So whether it's a, whether it's a formal meeting, or whether you wanna sit on and lay out the whole deck cards, we're, we'll make ourselves available.
Um, so. I, I was excited, uh, when, when, uh, Alderman Roll had mentioned that we, we were gonna have a, a road fund. And I, I don't see that reflected in here, and, and I, I, I mean, is it any way that we can have it put in there, even if it's a zero line item?
My understanding is we cannot create a new fund with that.
No, he is, we agreed to a, we can do a spreadsheet without causing a lot of things to adding up, because the roads, money is spread across four or five lines. You get a spreadsheet where, uh, from all, taking all the pieces out of here and putting on one sheet, adding it to the back of this. This money in MFT, this money in article, this money in, uh, CPG, this money in TIF. Yeah, that's, that's, once you guys.
When I started.
Spreadsheet together.
I'm gonna simplify the accounting that exists to say, and, and I do get your question, Alderman, I absolutely do, because, believe me, I've learned a lot from this process myself. Cause you can't open it to a page and say, why are we spending on roads this year, right? You need to know where the four places you're looking are at, yeah. So we're gonna do our best to staff to simplify that from an accounting standpoint, so that the council has the information that it's like, we need to get to the public, but this is more spending on roads. It gets, it gets a little more wonky when you, when you get into the actual reading of the budget, but I do understand what you're trying.
And if you look at what Bergen neried it, I appreciate something like this, he's, he's referencing, this money's coming out of MFT, this money's coming to CPG, this is TIF. A little more detail maybe, and less on the exact streets, but more detail on the dollar miles. That's what I foresee, and you can have one page and you follow up the road budget line item. And it's which line items to reference in the, in the appropriation.
And that, that would be then also moving more towards a budget, which I, I think we've all agreed, we'd like to try to move towards running on a budget. Which I think would be a good thing, and, um, it would help for, you know, I got a lot of questions in that regard, but it's really that kind of answer to the appropriation.
No, and, and the, the, like I said, the, what's under the hood area that you're looking at, that's what would be the appropriation back, which is a lot simpler for us, right? It's gonna be fun, fun dollar, fun dollar, but what we have there is very much the making of a budget, right? So I think, I, you know, I can credit both the staff, the, you know, our, our city staff and, and Alderman Roll for, I. This is my experience with government, certainly a lot more than we did at the park, a lot more than I saw State University do in terms of how they created their budget. Lot more than I saw State University do in terms of how they created their budget, so um I think we have the makings very much in this, in these documents of. Of what we can point to as responsible balance.
You have a question, so Alderman? Uh, um, please contact, I I've asked um Tom and Mark questions specific than I have. I've kind of kept an arm's length distance, I've a lot of historical knowledge, you pick from me, uh, certain things that are around. And also my father, I can call on exactly what is this, what is that? But um, this is more detailed than we've ever got, especially with Alderman Roll's help, I've never seen spreadsheets like this even from our accounts. So, again, thanks for the time you put into this, I hope we can get this passed. And uh move forward to a final doing a budget like we've done, like we've never done, we'd ask for over over again.
Oh, I'm disagreeing with you, Mayor, uh, because. What I've been asking for from auditing companies uh and things as well, Mr. Roll, Alderman Roll has brought to the table, I'm just saying. It equates to things I've been asking for thirteen years. That's a long time. Very long time.
Your longest serving alderman, Alderman.
Yeah, no, never have, but but he's operating off nineteen sixty six paywalls to do this. In today's time, but we have spent more money on auditing companies now, we have them as a consulting company. Which I don't agree with, that we could have been, this process could have been a lot longer.
Well, we have to start somewhere, so this is the first one under this city council, and uh. All right, nothing else, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda.
I'll keep my steps a little open following week after three P M.
If you maybe you want to meet and go over this or get some questions answered, please reach out.
Thanks, Josh, I would.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on, um, is there anything else from the administrative?
All corporations right now.
City clerk, anything outside of those nine, okay. City attorney's report, we have three uh ordinance, some gendered ordinance for the city of Loy Island. Amending fair housing, um, also, there's still some tweets need to be done, we'll move on to the next council meeting with you guys. Uh, coming to some kind of consensus, you know, build a firm. Okay. That was the one that we tabled last time. Number two, we have ordinance for city of Loy Island, uh, outdoor special events. I don't know if the attorney or administrator want to speak on this, we have nothing on the books, nothing on the books, um, dictating. Uh, allowing special events to occur in the city, um, maybe also the backstory how we we went through with this. I only take a clock here for the meeting, uh, Tom, you want to agree with what's going?
Uh, we get requests from people, sometimes well, we sometimes not, um, about can they do an event? Uh, the only thing city code speaks to is black parties, the city clerk has the authority to approve. We've used that one appropriate, um, but it starts to stretch uh the bounds of. Doing that, that if you're, um, you know, want to approve, say someone's, you know, fundraising or we want to have. Uh, we had an individual who said they want to do a fundraiser for sporting events, we don't really know what kind of sporting events, we started talking, city attorney and myself. Do you know what, it's a boxing event, we don't really have anything, so what we're what we're looking for from from the mayor's office, the administration. Is, and if, right, the council members, we need to use one or the other, is a little bit more control and and ability to uh define what events are allowable in town. Basically, so there's just an absence.
And I think this is boilerplate generic, and I didn't want to speak on it, but I'd like to. Because it's very time sensitive, because we're moving into everybody asking for events, more than. Yeah, um, if there's anything, just like with fair housing, that needs to come up, and we can make adjustments for next city council, please contact the city attorney. Or we can review it, it's like two pages here, was there any questions offhand from the back that you could review?
Just one real quick, um, and if he answered the vague question I had, which was this does not affect black parties. Uh, and and it, is any, I mean, is it real clear that this that. Affect black parties, I mean, do you need to say anything here that? Special events other than black parties or something?
In the code itself, it's under a chapter, and black parties is a phone section, and this would be a phone section. Okay, that's how we're proposing that event.
Okay, uh, um, as to the the fees, um, I I saw that the fees were broken up into. Um, length of time before the event occurred. Um, and then it it goes from fifty, hundred, a hundred and fifty, and then jumps to five hundred, um, or the the shortest left period of time. Um, again, I just want to preface this with the, we're working with that city. Um, it is, is there a reason for the jump between the. Uh, one fifty to the five hundred price?
Uh, the planning, some of these events is extensive, some might need extra police services, which would require overtime, some. You know, extra colored work services, garbage cans, closing down streets, and things like that, to get that all. Together in fourteen days is expensive and takes a lot of time for uh city. So that's why it jumps so much, you give us time, plan it. It'll cost a lot.
Yeah, I know, reasonable, because I could get out the ideas to discourage someone.
Yes, yes, correct. Yeah. Understood. All right, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda, by any means, like review it again, Alderman, yes?
Is there any um, anything in the language, like speaking, if I wanted to have a an event? For my annual plan rally or like that, is there any kind of, you know, discriminatory discriminatory language in that to farm maybe?
Where the city has.
Violence and things, right?
We can't step on rights, but is there attorney stuff that we've banned in there that would give smart control over the knife?
There may be, it's not in there right now, so I.
We got very generic.
I mean, there's very certain laws about the protests and things like that, uh, but I can look into possibly adding. Um, to this ordinance, something, you know, within the law that would help us regulate it a little more.
All right, so we, you know, I obviously, uh, mentioned to you, there was several of those rallies in Loy Island in the eighties, early eighties. They were a lot of dumb, only like on bridge or something like that, they like, you know, from the books, this is uh. We can see it.
Yeah, that's why I asked, is equal question.
I'll look into it, and I'll update you at a later.
Last thing we have under this section is, let me clean up some language, um, that being chief. Uh, and commanders saying salaries would be appropriated for in the year of appropriation. Is that the only change for this?
Uh, yes, well, I think. Yes.
So, just cleaning up.
Are they, I haven't looked back yet, are the salaries specified in the appropriation?
Currently, oh, in this corporation, that's not a question for me, Alderman Roll.
They're they're grouped because, you know, according to whether or not it's full time or part time salary.
I guess I saw that, but I I kind of reading this language, and this isn't the law yet, I understand, but. It would seem like this is actually saying that, you know, the police chief's salary should be stated in the appropriation.
Yes, I don't know.
But this isn't, this isn't the law yet.
Appropriation is not, appropriation is not that correct. In its current form.
Right, yeah, I understand.
Um, yeah, really quickly, to go back on on the first two, um, since buying our batch of both of those. Uh, ordinances, um, we should publish. Your notice to the public for the thirty eight.
We don't have to, we're not, so last time we get illegal, it's like a thousand dollars. Would you enact it?
I thought that's what I read in.
Like this budget posting is gonna be like six, eight hundred bucks.
What do you, what do you refer to?
Uh, to to the um. And any, we, ordinance that has a finer uh. Penalty attached to it, um, that. Notice be given to the general public.
No, uh, notice does not have to be given, but it will be published to the public to view, you know, it'll be updated in our code. Uh, and they'll have knowledge of it if they come and ask for a special event ordinance, so, or or a special event permit, they'll receive.
They all say published, you can't perform on the bottom, that's probably what it's referenced, it's, that's a public document, not like in my desk, you know.
And it's not like the notice that we're gonna do for the appropriation ordinance, which is very specifically required in the statute.
The appropriation, the levy. Those are the two big ones, they have to be posted, Treasury report is signed in if you have noted. There's all, there's only two or three things that you have to put in the paper. I did all those classes when I was clerk.
Zoning, planning, zoning.
Planning, zoning, notice for thirty days, certain things that violate, yeah, not a lot, that have to be. And and as as long as we're we're doing things that, you know, according to the. Code, I think we're good. All right, so moving on, we have. Alderman reports.
Just an issue, uh, Mayor, like signals, you know, John, you probably wanted to go online and get straight to the ordinance and things that. Accessible.
You ready, you go back.
It's almost ready.
We want everything out. Right, if you post doing that, right, it's a confirmation. It's gonna make everybody's life larger, because we have some older laws that wouldn't. Yeah, I went through the area with this last one, the assurance, and it all was already done, why do I even waste anybody's time? I could just look it up, okay, so, exactly. Um, so, yeah, that up page is gonna help with that, but right now, you go back to what, twenty thirty?
Twenty four, up to twenty four tables in the works, so.
Yeah, two thousand eleven wasn't in there either.
I'm sure.
I think I'm gonna have that.
As long as you were here.
I I think I do.
Great, I love to see it.
All right, we have all the reports, questions? Now, we have an executive session. Need a motion to go into executive session, motion, I'll read it, second round, Alderman Carr, big question. Are we, are we, are we?